Call to order, tonight's city council meeting, September 5th, 2023. Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Powers.
Here.
Luttrell.
Turner.
Yes.
Fire Robin.
Here.
Hutton.
Here.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you for attending the meeting. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities have been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time a public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet has been provided as you enter council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during the meeting. I'd like to now ask Police Chief Matt Austin will lead us in our invocation, and Fire Chief Mike Carrier will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly father, in our hearts we plan our course, but we pray that you establish our steps. We thank you tonight first and foremost for your son, who has blessed us with the gift of salvation. We thank you, Lord, for giving us the purpose that brings us all here today to this meeting. We thank you, Lord, for the wonderful community that where we work, learn, and play. We thank you for our council members. We ask that you guide them to act with character and conviction as they lead and make decisions. Help them listen with understanding and goodwill. Give them wisdom and discernment. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Remind them that they are stewards of your authority. We thank you for the community members that are here willing to take part in these proceedings. Remind us all that we may not always agree, but to help all of us to understand, to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree. And help us treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence that would be pleasing to you. We will not fail to give you all the praise and glory, in Jesus' name. Amen. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Okay, Ms. Waters, are there any additions?
There are none.
Okay. We have three proclamations and one recognition this evening. The first proclamation is honoring noted King University alumnus. Vice Mayor Hutton will read this proclamation. And we have President Whitaker here to receive it.
It's a proclamation honoring noted King University alumnus, Dr. Allen W. Fields. Whereas Dr. Allen Wayne Fields, known simply as Al to his friends, was a member of the freshman class of 1970 at King College in Bristol, Tennessee. And whereas, by all accounts, he excelled in his studies with no records of any less than stellar grades, nor any record of misconduct on his part while a student. And whereas tragically, in September 1973, succumbed to a long illness. And whereas, at the age of just 36, he died in Newark, New Jersey, leaving behind his father, Jack, along with his brothers George, Pat, James, and Steve. And whereas, in solemn remembrance, King's psychology faculty donned black armbands as they joined the rest of the campus in mourning. And whereas, King subsequently received a number of financial gifts in Al's memory from benefactors who were moved by the news of his untimely passing. And whereas, the story of demise inspired unity among faculty and students, along with benevolence from the community. And whereas, it was discovered that not only had Al not shuffled off his mortal coil, but had never assumed it in the first place. And whereas, Al's actual origins lie with a student named Pat and some of his friends who inscribed his names on the attendance roster in their freshman math class and continued to do so throughout the semester, thus giving rise to the phony frosh. And whereas, many of these students would go on to become psychology majors, letting their professions in on the joke as Al became one of their students. And whereas, in 1973, in a moment of boredom, several of these students devised a bogus obituary for their counterfeit classmate, including a brief stint as a professor of psychology at King from 1967 through 1969, then used the library's phone to call it into a local newspaper, where they were delighted to see it printed. And whereas, the school's development office, upon discovering the source of the cause of the célébre behind the recent influx of support, had then to notify donors of the ruse and persuade them not to rescind their gifts. And whereas, when Al's old classmate, Pat, would join King's faculty nearly a decade later as Dr. Pat Flanagan, he decided that a phantom tenor by the name of Al Fields would be part of every symphonic choir performance. And whereas, a gravestone bearing his name, the only such stone on King's 135-acre campus can still be found behind Parks Hall, perpetuating the legend of Al Fields. Therefore, be it resolved that Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby recognize noted King University alumnus, Dr. Allen W. Fields, for no student at any American university has had such a place in a college's history, nor such a legacy. Though this month, he has now been absent from King and this world for 50 years, his presence nevertheless abides at music events, presidential inaugurations, and other important events at Bristol's hometown campus, almost if he had never left, this 5th day of September 2023.
Do you want to...
All of us go for this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for that wonderful recognition of King. You know, we take many things at King very seriously. We take academics seriously. We take sports seriously. We take faith seriously. We certainly take students seriously. But we strive with all our being not to take ourselves too seriously, in the strong belief that part of what's wrong with this world is that people take themselves too darned seriously. And a great exemplar for not taking oneself too seriously was Al Fields, who, of course, never existed, but who has continued at King as a legacy of really one of the best pranks, college pranks, on any campus of any American college or university. And just when one thinks that Al Fields is gone forever, he pops up in a program someplace. He pops up in most unexpected places. Indeed, I have plans for a building that might one day be built on the King campus in my office, and it bears the placeholder name of Al Fields Hall. So Al Fields has been with us, reminding us not to take ourselves too seriously, reminding us that college can and should be, for all of those involved, a fun and lively place with a bit of whimsy, a bit of nonsense, and a lot of fun. Thank you very much for being part of that fun tonight and for including us. And I do want to recognize emeritus professor of music, Pat Flanagan, who it is alleged had something to do with both the creation and demise of Mr. Fields, Dr. Fields, and how proud we are of that gift, one of many that Pat had. And I hope, Pat, that that's not the only thing 50 years from now you're remembered for, because you've given so much to this school. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we have a proclamation for Child Passenger Safety Week. Councilwoman Fire Robin and Sam Jones and Chief Carrier here to receive the proclamation.
Great. And this is annually, and it's a joint proclamation with Bristol, Virginia. And Samuel is with Appalachian Promise Alliance and Buckle Up for Life. Whereas, children are our future, and it's the responsibility of parents, caregivers, and communities to keep America's children safe. And whereas, car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles. And whereas, research analyzed by Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center shows that in the U.S., only one in four car seats are properly installed. And whereas, research shows when installed and used correctly, children riding in car seats have a 71% to 82% reduced risk of injury when they're properly restrained. And whereas, parents and guardians must make sure that the children aged 13 and under always ride in the backseat following the age-appropriate instructions, buckle up properly in properly-installed child safety seats, including not placing rear-facing seats in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag. And whereas, the cities of Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children. And whereas, children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. And whereas, car seats can be checked at several locations in each city, at the fire and police departments, as well as with other community partners such as Appalachian Promise Alliance and Ballard Health Nice Wonker Children's Hospital and Johnston Memorial Hospital Children's Resource Center. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayors of Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23, 23rd, 2023, as Child Passenger Safety Week in Bristol, and the day of September 19th as Buckle Up for Life Day. We encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time. Vince Turner and Neil Osborne, mayors Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia.
Yes, thank you for the proclamation. Recently, Appalachian Promise Alliance has added another technician to our staff. And also, the week that is Child Passenger Safety Week, there will be a car seat check at Food City from 12 to 6 on Euclid Avenue. And it's just very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this proclamation, recognizing the importance of Child Safety Week and the importance of properly-installed child safety seats. And the statistic that you read there, that a properly-installed seat, there's a 71% better chance that a child will not have injury. And you'd be surprised at how many seats are not properly installed. And the good thing about participating in car installation for the community is that when those parents come in for that car seat installation, and we have one of our certified technicians to install that seat, another thing that we do along with that is we show the parents, the grandparents, whatever the case may be, how to take that seat out and then reinstall it properly. Because, as you all know, a lot of people have to take a seat from one car to another. And so, I think it's very important that we continue down this path of showing our importance for properly-installed child safety seats. And again, I do appreciate your all's recognition of how important this really is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Carrier, I was just, I've said it before in here, but I was real surprised with the training. It's 32 hours of training to be a tech, and that's because there's all different kinds of seats, there's all different kinds of cars. So be sure that the techs are thoroughly trained to know how to install them properly in all the different kinds of vehicles.
That's for the initial certification. And then they have to go through periodic recertifications, which has additional training.
Yes.
And they have to demonstrate that they can reinstall all of those seats from the car carrier base for the infant to the forward-facing, rear-facing, the convertible, and all those. And so, they have to demonstrate all of that periodically to be able to maintain their certification as a technician. So it is time insensitive on the technician's part, but it's a program that is well worth that time spent.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, next, we have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Councilwoman Powers will be reading that, and Cherry Feathers here to receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events for a family or a community, with more than 1,100 lives lost in Tennessee each year, and an estimated 25 attempted suicides for each actual death. And whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of all deaths in Tennessee, the third leading cause of death among youth and young adults ages 10 to 12, as well as the second leading cause of death of adults ages 35, and the sixth leading cause of death for adults ages 45 to 54. Whereas, more than three lives are lost to suicide in Tennessee each day, 21 per week, 97 per month. And whereas, Tennessee veterans, active-duty military, and National Guardsmen face a disproportionate risk as compared to the general population, with this is astounding, more dying from suicide than combat. Think about that. Whereas, public awareness of this tragic problem is the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and the risk of human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment, as the highest risk for suicide is among the survivors of those who have died by suicide and by those who have attempted suicide. Whereas, suicide prevention has been declared a state priority by the governor, Bill Lee, and the Tennessee State Legislature has declared teen suicide prevention as a state priority in partnership with the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network to implement the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas, Tennessee is considered a national leader in an effort to prevent suicide, being one of the first states to develop a suicide prevention and evaluation plan covering the lifespan. And whereas, 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline provides 24/7 free and confidential support for people in distress, prevention and crisis, resources for you or your loved ones, and best practices for professionals in the United States. And whereas, the governor of Tennessee has appointed a Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council to coordinate the implementation of the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas, the TSPN is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas, every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need an occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting for our own battles. And whereas, we encourage all Tennesseans, as well as Bristolians, to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family and friends, and that that inquiry be truly genuine and meaningful. And to convey our appreciation for one another's existence by any gesture we deem appropriate. A simple phone call, a message, a handshake, a hug, a glance can go a long way towards acknowledging and helping someone realize that their life does have meaning and that suicide is not the answer. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, along with council, hereby proclaims 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and urge all citizens, Tennesseans, Bristolians, to prevent suicide and to raise awareness and tolerance around all people affected by this tragedy. It's very real. This, the 5th day of September 2023. Vince Turner, Mayor.
Thank you. On behalf of the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network, I would like to thank the Bristol City Council for recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. We know that if we have a medical emergency, we pick up the phone and call 911. But when we've had a mental health emergency, or we've had thoughts of suicide, we've had to look up the number in a phone book, or there's nowhere to turn. So we're so pleased over this past year that we have the three-digit universal phone number, that we can pick up the phone and we can call 988. And we know that when we pick up the phone nationally, no matter where we are in the nation, when we call 988, we're going to be connected with a trained counselor who can talk to us and help us. 988 is available to people who are depressed, who are lost, who are lonely, who are having thoughts of suicide. But if we have a friend or a loved one that we're concerned about, we don't know what to do, we don't know where to turn, we can call 988, and that counselor's there to help us and guide us through that. So we just want to spread that message of help and hope and healing to our community. We heard a lot of statistics when you read the proclamation, I appreciate that. But we believe at TSPN that one suicide is too many. So thank you for all you're doing to help us to reduce stigma and prevent suicide in our community.
Thank you. All right, next, we have a recognition award to our Bristol, Tennessee Police Department from the Tennessee Highway Traffic Safety Department.
Chief Austin? Again, thank you. And again, every year, the state of Tennessee ranks the agencies across the state for their traffic safety initiatives and their work with traffic safety and trying to reduce the number of traffic crashes and fatalities across the state. We're very proud here in Bristol of our traffic program. And again, this year, some of the programs and everything that went into that, I'm going to bring up Lieutenant Jimmy Dillard after the photograph to explain more about the process for our first-place award in the state of Tennessee this year.
I want to start by saying thank you to the city council for your continued support. We appreciate your support more than you all know. A little bit about the law enforcement challenge. It was created in 1988 by the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. They created it as an opportunity for police departments across the state to kind of show what they're doing in their jurisdictions, to help reduce crashes, to help reduce fatalities related to traffic crashes, and to help reduce injuries. Each agency across the state is judged on four categories. The first category is department policies and procedures. So what they're looking at, they're wanting to be sure each department has a policy in place that places an emphasis on distracted driving, on speeding, on seatbelt usage. place that places an emphasis on distracted driving, on speeding, on seatbelt usage, on impaired driving, and also that the police departments have policies on place themselves requiring their employees to wear a seatbelt. So that's the first thing we're judged off of. The second thing is the THSO activity. So Tennessee Highway Safety Office has numerous initiatives throughout the year, Click-It or Ticket, 100 Days of Summer Heat, I can go on and on. They look at each department and see how active we are in their programs. We try to participate in everyone they have because they're excellent programs. They also look at how, if we submit our claims for grants on time, if we submit our status reports, our campaign numbers on times. And also, traffic safety training falls under that. Are we teaching the public about how to be safe out here driving? The next category they look at is, does the department have incentives and recognition in place for officers that go above and beyond enforcing these traffic-related things? And the last section, the largest section, is public information and education. We couldn't do it by ourselves. The city's media relations department helps us, and we work with her all the time, put out press releases, put out stuff on social media. In addition to that, the traffic engineer, MICA, an example of something we're doing is the plan for the race. You know, they're lowering the speed limit, they're putting up messaging boards, they're putting up speed bumps, just anything we can do to educate the public on, hey, we need to be careful. We got a lot of people out here we need to take care of. But that's pretty much it. You know, we're going to do everything we can to make these streets in Bristol as safe as we can. Just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to note, I think when Chief Austin began his position, that this was one of his goals to focus on. So this is a great acknowledgement of success with that, so, great.
Next, we have no presentations tonight. Then we have the Board of Education report, but I would like to recognize, I believe we have some students from THS here this evening, from Mr. Cross's class.
We do.
I'd like to stand up and be recognized.
And embarrass you. Stand up.
Yeah, when I... Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, and we have one over in the corner.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me address you this evening. I'd also like to thank you for proclaiming September Suicide Prevention Month. In the spirit of that proclamation, I would like to just give you an overview of some of the services we have in place for our students. I think that it would be good to publicly draw attention to those things, and these are the folks that we support with all of our services. First and foremost, I know you all are very well aware that we have a Family Resource Center that supports our families and our students in a variety of ways: clothing, food insecurities, connection to community services, of course, our Reading Buddies programs, the book bus, so on and so forth. In addition to that, we have our Health Services Department. We have a full-time nurse in every one of our schools. And prior to COVID, we actually only had part-time nurses in our schools, and so we were able to use our S.R. grant dollars to hire those folks in full-time. We have coordinated school health program, which is operated by our school system nurse. It is a set of health and wellness goals and helps support our PE programs in our schools. We also partner with Ballot Health. We have telehealth services in each of our schools, so our students can access a nurse-practitioner or a physician without leaving our campus, which helps keep them in school where we want them to be if their ailments are minor enough. I also want to draw attention to, Dr. Coleman supervises our student services program, and she wrote a grant this summer. It's a three-year grant for 1.1 million. It's the Stronger Connections Grant. And through that grant, we were able to sustain, we had had to decrease our district behavior interventionist position, but because she got that grant this summer, we were able to hire that position back. As you are probably aware and have heard nationwide, there are lots of mental health issues and concerns with our students across the nation, and we're certainly, we are experiencing that as well in Bristol. And so our district behavior interventionist help system-wide helps our students manage challenging behaviors and helps our teachers figure out how best to support them as well. We also have funding in that grant for a social-emotional learning curriculum, which helps our students learn how to deal with those emotions and teachers learn how best to support them. And we're also able to hire some school psychology interns. School psychologists are pretty rare, and it's a pretty intense process to become a school psychologist. And so through this program, we're going to be able to basically hire them like a part-time employee. They will work for almost nothing, but they need the hours under a licensed school psychologist, and so that will help us. We also partner with Frontier Health. I know they were here this evening. We have TeleHelp, also TeleHealth, but Frontier Health has a TeleHelp portion of that for crisis intervention. So our staff in school can open up a case and contact Frontier Health immediately if they have concerns about our students. Frontier Health also partners with us to provide counselors and therapists and case managers. We have one per school in our district, and so they're right on-site with us, and they open cases and they support our students on campus without having to leave. So they provide those services right in school. And then finally, we just, probably in late April, early May, we partnered with communities and schools. They actually provide us with some student support coordinators. We have one at Tennessee High School and one at Tennessee Middle School. They have secured a grant where we're going to be able to offer that same support at all of our elementary schools later this year. Those folks have a caseload of about 60 students that they target within our schools. They do a lot of family engagement activities, really trying to be more proactive in supporting our families and our students rather than waiting for some crisis or some tragedy or some behavior need to intervene. So they really try to work on the front end on things like attendance and grades and supporting families and students with their needs. So I appreciate your recognition of suicide prevention, all of those supports, obviously, for the students that you see here. That's why we do those things, is to make sure that we have adequate supports in place for them. And certainly, the last few years have been much more demanding and challenging in that space, and so it's necessary that we have those supports in place. So, thank you. Do you all have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have no public hearings this evening, and next is the appearance of citizens. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on any matter of city business. Response will not likely be made at this time. In most cases, neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into it and report back to city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you. We just ask to limit your minutes to three minutes, and the sign-up sheet was out, we had one, Brad Bingham. Who cares, just to state your name and address for the record.
Brad Bingham, 823 Trammell Road. I guess I'm, from reading the paper, I've heard about the Bristol Municipal Stadium, referred to as the Stone Castle. And you'll hear me refer to it a lot as the Bristol Municipal Stadium for a reason, that it's a source of pride for Bristol. It's not just for the field of playing football and stuff like that. Because if you go to the stadium, most of the people in the stands are not the players, not the students, they're citizens. And if you look at, I have to commend the school board for what work they've done so far. On the home side, it's great, but for years, the visitor's side has struggled. And so if you come to Bristol and you know you're coming to the Stone Castle, instead of, if you think about the first time you saw the Stone Castle, if you close your eyes, I'm sure you can remember what awesomeness it was and how much you enjoyed going there. But if you go to the visitor's side, it's not too good. And there's a lot of Bristol fans, Tennessee High fans, that sit on the visitor's side because there's actually more seating on the visitor's side than there is on the home side. So I hope that the city council, with however this is going to work out, that you don't necessarily have to take it over. You know, you be a good mother and dad or a good brother and sister, and you come up with that money and you go past what they're asking for. Because I feel like that it's a city thing to fix, but it's great that the school board has taken on this challenge of over $3 million. And I'm sure that we can find somewhere in the city budget, or however it needs to be appropriated, that somehow they can be reimbursed for what they're taking on. Now, you hear the NASCAR say it's the greatest, last, best coliseum. Uh-uh, no it ain't. The Bristol Municipal Stadium is the last greatest coliseum. And I hope that you take the time and embrace what needs to be done there, and let's make it another pride point for the city, for everybody enjoy for almost another 100 years, because it's coming up on its birthday in another 13 years or so, right? And I hope that y'all take that time and do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have one appointment, which is for the Library Board, and there is one candidate, Dr. Barry Hopper. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of Dr. Hopper?
I will. I think Dr. Hopper, anything that he takes on, he does especially well, and I think he would do a great job. I know, Margaret, you have worked with Dr. Hopper, so...
I spoke with him last night, and he's very enthusiastic and ready to serve in that capacity.
So ballots, we have Councilwoman Fire Robin, Barry Hopper. Vice Mayor Hutton has Barry Hopper. Councilwoman Powers has Barry Hopper. And Mayor Turner has Barry Hopper. Congratulations, Barry Hopper.
Thank you. I mean, was there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment that did not sign up?
I live at 101 Robin Road in Bristol, Tennessee. I support Brad's motion there to try to come up with the money. I know that there's a lot of things involved, that maybe it was taken away somewhere and we're trying to put it back and all the different things, but it is a worthwhile cause. And, but while, I didn't intend to speak, but while I was here, I thought, you know, I'll just go ahead and get it in. My mother lives on Holston Avenue, and I grew up there, and I no longer live over there. But I've noticed a lot of new investment in Holston Avenue, young people. You know, it's really exciting to see those houses being fixed up and in investment, and it's a real source. There's a lot of people that just drive up and down Holston Avenue just to look at those homes. And I'm really encouraged by the amount of investment instead of it going to a blighted area. And so one of the things I've noticed, though, because I go and walk my mother's dog, is there's just some areas of sidewalk that are just awful. And I see these young people pushing these strollers with babies in them, and they're having to come out in the road, and, or they're, you know, we saw one person fall that was just going on a morning walk. And I know that sidewalks are very expensive. I want to commend the entire city for the sidewalk projects that they've accomplished. I think every one of them has added to the city, and they really look nice. And so maybe we wouldn't have to do the entire sidewalk over, maybe we could just pick out those, the guys from the city could pick out those areas that are just like where they're all just awful, and maybe just repair those. I don't know if there's any money left for sidewalks, but it would be something that I think that would add and continue to encourage investment on the tax base over there on Holston Avenue for some of those big homes. I think that would be a really worthwhile project. And Brad's son, Brad is the son of Coach Bingham. I want to throw that in there in case some of you didn't know, one of the former coaches, the head coaches at Tennessee High. And it is a real treasure, and it has been awful for years on the visitor's side. And that reflects on Bristol when visiting teams come in the lower locker rooms. It's awful. I remember when I was a player at Tennessee High, we would go to, I won't mention Irwin or some of those places that we would go to, but the visitors' locker rooms were just awful. And we used that as a point of motivation, you know? Look where they're sticking us. And so, bottom line, if you have really nice dressing rooms for the visitors, as well as your own folk, it gives our team an advantage. So if it's any, yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have an ordinance on first reading to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee by designating certain property at 1517 Fifth Street as R3 multifamily residential. Sheriff Young will present.
Thank you, Mayor Turner. Good evening, council members. So tonight, we're here to review a first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map that would consider rezoning 1517 Fifth Street from R1A, a low-density single-family zone, to R3 multifamily zone. And we did receive the request from the property owner, Mr. Dean Beckman. Currently, the parcel is vacant, and it's approximately .66 acres in size. So an excerpt here from our zoning map that shows the area, the parcel subject for the rezoning request is hatched with red lines. There are a couple of different zones in the area. You do have some R3 across the street, and you do have some R1A to the south. You'll see on the map that in this area, you do have the city garage that's located south of this parcel. Up above, you do have some newer multifamily units that have been constructed in the past few years. You also have the real-life church there at the corner of Weaver Pike and Fifth Street. The parcels to the immediate sides of the rezoning parcel are vacant currently. Just a quick summary of the uses allowed in R1A and R3. You have single-family and duplex allowed in both. R3 adds the multifamily use, and it also does allow for assisted living facilities, which would be more likely on a larger parcel than this one. Future land use map shows the parcel indicated for an industrial land use classification, so that's indicated by the darker gray on the map. To the north is a purple land use designation of medium-density residential. Staff, in looking at this, felt that the rezoning drop into a multifamily zone on the south side of Fifth Street was appropriate since there isn't multifamily in the area, and it would be unlikely for the smaller parcel to be used for an industrial land use. We did notify the public of the rezoning request by signs on the property and through letters to the adjacent property owners. We did receive one comment form back that was positive and in favor of the rezoning request. Planning Commission reviewed this item at their meeting on August 21st, and the vote was unanimous to forward a favorable recommendation to the city council on the rezoning request. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Young? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter this evening? Seeing none, do have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2310 to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee by designating certain property as R3 multifamily at 1517 Fifth Street.
Second. A motion and a second, in discussion? Mary Lee, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Powers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
All right, next, we have Resolution 23-103, is a resolution authorizing entry into a memorandum of understanding between the Bristol, Tennessee City School System and the City of Bristol, Tennessee for School Resource Officer Program. Danielle Smith will present this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tennessee law requires that if the city is going to provide law enforcement officers to serve in the schools as an SRO, that that relationship be governed by a memorandum of understanding between the city and the school system. Because of the grants that have been made available by the governor in this fiscal year to pay for up to $75,000 per school resource officer, the Department of Safety has pushed out its own form of grant, which is in front of you. It has not been made available to the public because the Department of Safety has instructed us to treat this as a confidential document. Under that MOU, the City of Bristol would provide seven SROs to the Bristol, Tennessee City Schools. City Schools. The MOU would support grant funding of the SROs at Anderson Elementary, Avoca Elementary, Fairmount Elementary, Haynesfield Elementary, Holston View Elementary, Bristol, Tennessee Middle School, and Tennessee High School. The MOU does not include grant funding for Viking Academy. In order to cover that, that, um, missing SRO, the city and the school system have decided to enter into an addendum to the main MOU between the city and the school system, and that addendum would cover the funding for the Viking Academy SRO, as well as a couple of other matters that were, were, we felt were less than clear in the MOU itself. The funding for the Viking Academy SRO would be reimbursed 100% by the, the salary and benefits for that SRO would be reimbursed by the school system to the city. All of the SROs are employees of the city, and we expect the grant funding, as we said, to cover up to $75,000 of the cost of each SRO, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, I do have a question, um, and it's only about, um, do we have enough trained, uh, SRO officers, police officers, that should we have any SROs to take a job somewhere else or to leave that position, that we could immediately fill that position?
I'm going to defer to Chief Austin on that question, because that's...
Uh, we are actively, uh, training officers to get that redundancy that we have, uh, trained officers that would be able to fill in. Uh, we had gone through this summer to, to get some new SROs, uh, uh, through school this summer as well, but we're going to continue over, uh, the next few months to, to get some more, uh, also trained to be able to do that.
So we would have an excess of trained personnel, should they be needed?
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
We don't at the moment, but we will have, yes.
Right, right.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
I don't, I don't have a question or anything about this resolution, I, but I do want to say, as I've said a couple of times before in work session, and even with our school board and, um, I mean, the, the need that we have for SROs in our community is, is enormous. I know, we, we all know that. Safety of our students and, and our faculty at our schools is paramount. My, my hope is, is that, that within, is we're working out all these details, is the state's contributing funds, is the city that working out these MOUs, is that this becomes something that we, as a city, take on more and more the financial burden, so that it's less and less on the school system. I mean, I understand we're, uh, working on these details out now, but my hope is that in the near future, that we can partner with them even more to, to make sure that we don't have to worry about grants, we don't have to worry about, I mean, state funding is great, but it doesn't take anything but a few votes at the legislature to, to see that funding go away, and my hope is that worryable in the next few years, I guess, to work out these details, so that this is a, just a done deal in terms of the city. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone, um...
I was just going to add to that. I think we also talked that, um, ideally, this becomes part of the budget with reoccurring funding, so it's also working with our legislators, um, to help them to understand the importance of it too, from the state's aspect, so.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the memor, memorandum of understanding between the city and the school system for the SROs.
Second.
A motion and a second, and any further discussion? Mary Lee, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Powers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
All right, next, we have Resolution 23-122, uh, resolution awarding a bid and authorization entry into an agreement for construction of the pickleball complex. Mr. Terry Napier will present.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so you'll recall, uh, actually, back early in 2021, we began the conversation about a pickleball park, as pickleball, uh, play was on the rise throughout the country, and we looked at our opportunities here in Bristol. Shortly thereafter, we entered in an agreement, uh, with the Sportsplex, Matt and Holly Lavender, and leased some land there beside of them, with the hopes to build a, a larger complex, uh, along with their partnership to provide other amenities to make it a social environment, as well as a recreation environment. To that end, we entered into a contract with Lowe's Design to design, uh, a pickleball park, and over the last year, that has occurred. Uh, that, uh, that final, uh, park was, uh, put out to bid, uh, and we received two bids, uh, the lower bid from Burwell Construction Company for $2,737,000, um, to construct on the land that we've leased beside of the, uh, Sportsplex, a 13-court, uh, pickleball park, that'll not only serve the recreational needs of the community, but also with the, the agreement we have with the Sportsplex for both local and regional, and now national tournaments to be hosted at that facility.
Council, any questions? Mr. Mayor? Do I have a motion? Or is there anyone in the public that would like to address this issue? Please, come...
I think it's statistics, uh, too, uh, when we saw the losses, this pickleball still always rises, and it was...
It is, it is.
And, uh, the data shows that, and if, and if it's all, uh, voice, uh, get this facility to be a part of this, uh, that's what it's...
I'm sure it could be, yes.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I would just say that, um...
Well, if, I mean, if, asking a question...
I'm not asking a question, so...
Okay, well...
We'll do this and come back and I'll make a comment.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the, um, Resolution 23122, uh, awarding a bid and authorizing entry into agreement for construction of the pickleball complex.
I have a second.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, in discussion.
My, uh, my comment would be, yes, we do have the data points, and we have done a lot of, uh, comparative analysis to other communities that have this come in. Um, in most instances, especially there's to be a national tournament here in August, and the return on the investment, um, while it will not pay for itself immediately, as with any municipal project, it is projected to pay for itself over time and not into the horribly distant future. Um, we know that we will collect sales tax, we know that we will collect occupancy tax, um, it's, it will bring people in from throughout the region, as well as the southeast and the nation, and our understanding at this point, is it August 24th of 2024, is the national tournament to be televised?
Yes, it will be televised.
It will be televised, and so, I don't know if you, if you've watched much of this, but, you know, uh, if you watch commercials, they're playing a lot more pickleball than anything else now, uh, there are a lot of nationally televised tournaments now, so, uh, it's a, it's a great sport that most any age can play. There are collegiate teams, as well as high school teams now, and so, um, when we first started in, down this road about the pickleball, we recognized that it would be, uh, a great investment. The price for full transparency has increased, but with inflation, everything has increased. And so, for us to continue to move the community forward, we have got to begin taking some of these steps to have the amenities that attract, uh, new residents. It all, it's all webbed together, but I appreciate your question.
Anyone else? Okay, Mary Lee, I think we're ready for a vote.
Powers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have Resolution 23-123, uh, authorizing the purchase of lighting system for the pickleball complex through Sourcewell Cooperative. Napier?
Yes, sir, this is a companion piece, uh, we took opportunity, uh, when we were doing the bidding process, uh, we're able to use national co-ops to purchase equipment, and, you know, we could have left the lights in the bid and let the contractor buy those, mark them up, sell them back to us, but because we're able to use these national co-ops and purchase directly from Musco at a much, much discounted price, uh, in the bid, we, we included that we would provide them the lights, so it is in the bid process for them to install them, but we're able to purchase them at a, at a much lower price.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Um, yes, move to approve Resolution 23123, Resolution authorizing purchase of lighting system for pickleball complex through Sourcewell Cooperative.
A second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, uh, in discussion. Mary Lee?
Powers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes, thank you.
Next is our consent agenda. Beaujolais?
Thank you. First, we have the minutes of the August 1st, 2023 City Council meeting. Next, our approval of the minutes of the August 29, 2023 City Council Work Session. Next is approval of Resolution 23-104, that's adopting the consultant selection policy for project, projects funded in whole or in part with funds provided by the Federal Highway Administration, or TDOT. Next is approval of Resolution 23-105, that Resolution amends the Tennessee Department of Transportation Alternatives grant agreement for the Bluff City Highway Pedestrian Improvement Project. Next is approval of Resolution 23-106, authorizing payment to Trump and Pepper Hamilton Sanders for legal fees, and we have adoption of Resolution 23-107, authorizing purchases through the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchas, Purchasing Association. Then we have adoption of Resolution 23-108, authorizing the purchase of golf carts for the Steel Creek Golf Course through the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Association. And we have approval of Resolution 23-109, authorizing purchases through the Savic Buying Group, another cooperative purchasing association. And we have adoption of Resolution 23-110, authorizing the purchase of a new ambulance through the Savic Buying Group. Then there's adoption of Resolution 23-111, authorizing the purchase of a new tractor and boom, more for public services through the Source, Sourcewealth Cooperative. And we have approval of Resolution 23-112, authorizing participation in the Public Entity Partners, Safety Partners Matching Grant Program. And we have approval of Resolution 23-113, authorizing the emergency motor repair of fire engine one. And we have adoption of Resolution 23-114, awarding the bid for the purchase of forensic chamber, um, materials for their criminal investigation division of the Police Department. We have approval of Resolution 23-115, awarding the bid for the purchase of police handguns. Then Resolution 23-116, awarding the bid for the purchase of red dot sights for police officers. Then approval of Resolution 23-117, awarding the bid for the purchase of gun holsters for the police officers. And we have adoption of Resolution 23-118, approving a proposal to locate automated, automated license plate readers within the city limits, including on certain straight, state rights of way. Then we have adoption of Resolution 23-119, authorizing the purchase of the automated license plate readers under the state contract. Again, this was a grant program that was approved, um, just a few months ago. And we have adoption of Resolution 23-120, approving the inter-local cooperative agreement with the Emergency Communications District of the City of Bristol, Tennessee. And we have adoption of Resolution 23-121, approving a grant agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the utilization of Federal Highway Administration planning funds for the Bristol Metropolitan Planning Organization. And finally, we have adoption of Resolution 23-124, authorizing large water meter replacement services by Reed and Shouse.
Would any member like any of these removed?
No, but I'll just note particularly for our, a student guest, that our consent agenda, um, is not always this long. It's usually at the beginning of our fiscal year, we have a lot of purchases to make, so this one is exceptionally long, so just for an FYI.
I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second? Mary Lee?
Powers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have our city manager's report.
Just have a couple of things here. Um, one, I wanted to congratulate our, uh, MPO worker, Micah Bray, and all of the staff who helped with the great car show that was put on downtown. Um, they were kind enough to send a nice plaque in recognition as, and as a thank you for the excellent work that was done there. Um, congratulations to our Park and Rec and Operations Staff for a hugely successful downtown music, uh, season this year. Um, and then, of course, this week is the Rhythm and Roots Reunion Festival. Very much looking forward to my first one of those. And then the following week are the Bristol Motor Speedway Races, and again, very much looking forward to that. That's all I have.
Busy month?
Yes, very much so.
Council comments?
I'll kick off. Um, speaking of Rhythm and Roots, uh, there's a raffle. We have, uh, when I say we, I, I serve on the BCM as council representative. Uh, we have between 400 and 500 out of 5,000 tickets left. We're thinking that this will be a sellout by Friday at the latest, which is earlier than usual. We have sold, uh, we're right at 1,200, that, 1,200 single-day passes having been sold, and we are, uh, looking to meet our stretch goal of 7,000 three-day passes, which Mr. Napier can explain that, you know, a lot of people say, well, you know, if you only, if you sell 1,100 single day and 7,000 three-day, well, you're looking at having over 30, 35, 40,000 people downtown this weekend at any given time. So, uh, we're real excited about that. If you're interested in purchasing a raffle ticket, you can call the BCM office. It's a major fundraiser, and we would appreciate your support. So, the BCM is a nonprofit, and we partner with them. Um, our city staff works very closely with them to make this festival happen. The race, uh, you heard, uh, our officer this evening talking about the, uh, traffic patterns and the traffic plans. It is a piece of art, how quickly cars can come in and how quickly cars can come out, and so, we owe a lot to our, um, police force and traffic management staff for that. Uh, Bristol is becoming more and more of a tourist destination. Um, we're working with Explore Bristol about the Hoppy Festival that will take place in, uh, uh, Anderson Park. There'll be over, I don't know, 25, 30 different vendors of, uh, craft brews, food trucks, music, a great weekend. Uh, we'll be working, uh, with Explore Bristol on that one. We'll be working with Believe in Bristol in Cumberland Park to bring Bristol in bloom again in October, a great event. We'll also be working with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, with their Oktoberfest. So, my point being that, whereas the city may not be the sole sponsor for so much of this, these events could not be made possible, and the return on investment comes back to us significantly, again, through sales tax, through occupancy tax, uh, just putting Bristol out there and a lot of people coming in to find out where we are and what we're all about. On a different note, I'll speak to workforce development. I had the opportunity today to have lunch with, uh, an aviation executive in our area, and he had been to a conference in Kentucky where higher ed, a, as well as high school, had joined together to talk about workforce, and what they are finding is that, uh, CTE is just invaluable in keeping manufacturing and many services moving in our country, and that, he was very complimentary. He said, what's happening at Tennessee High School, the CTE program, and happening in Sullivan County, Kingsport, uh, we're on point. As a matter of fact, we are exceeding expectations in most instances comparatively speaking, so a shout-out to the school system with what they're doing with CTE and recognizing that vocation is every bit as valuable as any form of edu, any other form of education. So, kudos to all of our staff for special events, kudos to our police staff, kudos to our school system, and to our economic development staff again as well. Thank you.
Um, so, thank you very much for, for the time on the agenda. Um, I just want to thank our citizens, um, both of y'all for being here tonight and addressing us. It is an opportunity, um, and the primary opportunity for citizens to address us as a body, so, uh, appreciate that very much with your comment, and also, um, please tell Bill Bingham hello. He sat up here for four years as well and served, uh, very graciously, um, in that position. I also want to say... Also want to say, really glad to have you students here. And if y'all have any observations, questions, comments, things you didn't understand, things you were like, why are they doing that and couldn't they do that better? Don't hesitate to let us know. It'd be great. I want to encourage your participation. Come back again, go to your school board meeting as well. I would encourage you also that work sessions are where you get to hear us talk a whole lot more than we do here and get a little testy on a few things and try to work things out. So those work sessions are really important as well as the formal voting meetings. With that, want to invite anybody to come every year for, I don't know, 15 years or so. Bristol's Promise, which has changed its name to be Appalachian Promise Alliance, does a state of the schools in September. And so we'll be hearing from Dr. Tudor and the new superintendent of schools in Bristol, Virginia on September 28th, at 12 noon. We're meeting at the Bristol, Tennessee School System Round Building. So welcome folks to come. We do provide a lunch, so if you want a lunch provided, well, lunch costs a little bit. Anyway, but let us know, let me know, look on the Appalachian Promise Alliance website to register ahead. And lastly, Believe in Bristol had a meeting this morning and they are working to unveil soon their new logo, website, and working on some rebranding with that. That's exciting.